Makers, all planning commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on those topics for which a public hearing has not yet been held. We're going to start out tonight with a sound check and introduction. So we'll start out with our commissioners that are attending virtually with Commissioner Pestinger.
Kevin Pestinger, District One.
Commissioner Hanson.
Joel Hanson, District Three.
Commissioner Halverson.
Barry Halverson, District Two, Young, Washington.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Helen Lee, District One.
Derek Day, District One.
Doug Carman, District Two.
And I'm Eric Casino, District Two, the Chair of this season's planning commission. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. But before we get there, we do have to make one update to the agenda because some of the staff is not able to make it tonight. And we will be pushing off our work session on the wireless code update for another time. So we'll be deleting that out. Are there any other changes to the agenda anybody would like to propose? With that, may I take a motion?
We approve the judge as modified.
Second. The motion has been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Discussion, discussion.
Discussion.
Oh, you want to say? Is there any discussion on the matter?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pestinger.
On the matter of the wireless code plan, facilities plan. I thought we were very clear in previous meetings that we were requesting some examples of some prioritization tables that we could use. And none of that was in any of the packet materials that I could see. Maybe I'm missing it, but if we're not going to talk about it today, can we assure that we get those examples for our next meeting?
If we could request that of staff? Thank you. With that, let's take our vote on the amended agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed names? To digits, et cetera. And thank you for coming out. We're glad to see you here. With that, we'll move on to public communications. Wow, I'm reading this all weird this time. I'm sorry about that. The First Kind of Plan Commission does welcome public communications on all issues that have not been to public hearing yet or would otherwise be against our rules, which I don't have a copy from right now. With that, do we have anybody signed up to speak to the, to address the commission today? I'm sorry, sir.
Josh Collier.
Oh, okay, Josh. Please, please go ahead. Oh, Christie, you want to go first? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Can you hear me all right? Sound check, good? Thank you. Thanks again for being here tonight and doing the work that you do. Do not take it for granted. I just wanted to do my gentle reminders about risk versus protection. You all have a lot of code agenda items before you and how important it is to do that deep dive diligence on all of this that is in front of you. Many citizens on different issues that have been placed before you have done a lot of work as you do as volunteers. But as it said, we want to be heard, but I will say we want to be more than heard. We don't want to just keep patting on the head and that, okay, they've done their piece and they're going to go away and everything's fine. We really do want to have you take a look at the work that various citizens have done and information that they've put forward to you so that you really get a full picture of what the citizens of Thurston County are asking for. And I know that there's a middle ground and that we can find opportunity to continue growth that's needed for the county, but also importantly have those protections for the citizens that are equally, if not more important as well. You know, there can be dissent too. I know that there have been in the past minority reports, but I'm hopeful that we'll have not just a few people on the commission making recommendations to the B O C C, but really a collaborative deep dive understanding as you put forth various code amendments and recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christie. Thank you, Josh.
Good evening. Thanks again for your service. I echo Christie's comments. You guys work really hard and it's a volunteer thing and that's just awesome. So, a comment about process tonight. I know that the staff here works incredibly hard and cares for this community. I've recently been concerned about some changes to process that I see that basically things that the staff has decided that what this body can or cannot consider based on possible legal issues or whether or not it takes staff time and that deemed these things that should be reserved to the county commissioners to decide and not the planning commission. And that this body will only be presented with options that fall within these guides and it seemingly not even have questions answered when they, when they fall out of them, when information's been requested. What kind of precedent does this set for future code development if it's being done on a current code development? Staff has, on a particular issue, staff has decided that you can decide whether or not prohibit wireless in freeway and forestry zones, but you can't decide on prohibiting it in other zones or even defining setbacks. It seems kind of arbitrary to me. Are these issues public?
Oh.
That's the only thing I've been mentioning about wireless. It just was an example. Are these issues public? Are these, the issues that the public have brought really going to be presented as options to the commissioners on various code issues? Please fight for your voice and the voice of the people. That's why you're here and we really appreciate the work you're doing and we hope that you will fight to maintain your voice in all issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the boardroom that would like to address the planning commission? All right, see if nobody else. We will move on to. Yes, we're going to move on to the Zoom callers. Those wishing to participate be assumed. Please choose the raise your hand option if you wish to address the planning commission. You'll be promoted to panelist when it is your turn to speak and be seen. This may take a few seconds. Unmute yourself and turn on your camera to be heard and to be seen. You're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose the star six to unmute yourself. The three minute timer will show on the video screen to help you keep track of time. If you have any issues speaking and being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call 3609726785 to make your public comment. And then we'll have an explanation of the timer. Or is the timer just going to show up online?
It'll show up in one of the boxes, but they'll have two and a half minutes to speak where it'll be green. And then at that point, it turns yellow and at three minutes, it turns red, which means you're out of time.
With that, I think I'm having a hard time. Melinda will be up first. Linda Wish. You'll have to unmute yourself, Melinda.
Yes, I did. Actually, as you mentioned, it takes a couple of seconds to get to that point and finally technology caught up. Anyways, I know a couple of you, but for those of you that don't know me, my name is Melinda Hughes and I'm the Executive Director for Thurston Climate Action Team. Thank you again for, you know, devoting your time to help the Thurston County residents. So the reason I'm here tonight, there's the comprehensive plan coming up and TCAT is working with about 20 other organizations and individuals across the county to make sure that there's certain things that are going to happen with those comprehensive plan updates. One of those is we want to make sure that the affordable housing is definitely a priority. The second piece is on climate change. As you all know, the county has signed on to the Thurston County mitigation plan. So we want to make sure that climate change definitely plays a priority in that comprehensive plan updates, whether it be, you know, the tree canopy, whether it be electrification, whether it be, again, housing retrofits, whatever. We still need to bring those greenhouse gas emissions down, mitigation and adaptation. The third piece, of course, with the comprehensive plan updates is the public engagement piece. You know, a lot of people think that the comprehensive planning is pretty dry, which it is. I mean, if you read some of them, it can probably put you to bed, it might make you sleepy. But it's a very important piece because it looks at 10 years, which also looks at, you know, three or four decades ahead of time. So we're going to be trying to bring in the public to this process. We hope that you all will help as well. We're having a couple of sessions coming up in July. We're going to actually have a comp plan one on one. In August, we're going to be inviting the different planners from the different jurisdictions to talk about that public engagement process. So I just wanted to thank you all again for your time and we look forward to working with you more on the comprehensive plan process. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody online that would like to address the planning commission? All right, seeing no other hands, we will move on to item four, which is continued business or work session on the shoreline master program with Andrew Defobis.
Hey. Commissioners and planning. So about two weeks ago, staff distributed and posted a draft planning commission recommendation of the shoreline master program, both a clean copy and one that showed the edits made since the public hearing. Those edits came from requests from the planning commission, items that came up during public testimony, comments from and discussions with the Department of Ecology as well as community planning work sessions. So tonight, we want to start working through any questions the planning commission has on the changes of the major draft since the public hearing. And from what I understand from the last meeting, tonight, we'll try to focus on sections or chapters, rather, 19, 100, 300, and then continue with that review, see how far we get, and then continue with that review on the 15th of June. So that's really all I have is in a way preamble on like a pull up draft, just we can go to different sections and I've got my notes and things here. So we should be ready to rock and roll.
All right, I just really want to reiterate that, that what we're going to be discussing here tonight is going to be the unfinished business that we already had gone through and give staff direction on. Basically from the public hearing forward, which has been about the last eight or nine months. We're not going to go back and redo the last 10 or 12 years that this has been going together. If there's two or more people on the planning commission that don't like where things were up until there, I strongly encourage a minority report to come together. And I think it would be really great if there are small or small parts of this that you would like to see changes in, that this minority report reflects that. Minority reports are due before the beginning of business Monday after our recommendation has been put in. And if you have a minority report done before the start of business that Monday after our Wednesday meeting, we will forward it with our report. If not, you can certainly go directly to the plant or the Board of County Commissioners during their review of the whole process. And or you could do both. I mean, really, it's a great opportunity to talk individually or ask my partner for. But for what we're doing here today, we're trying to finish this all up. So we're not going to go back and redo everything that has been done by everybody else. Yes, Commissioner.
Process questions?
Yeah.
Learning on that minority report concept. So can you explain that a little bit more? Like, how, how does that work? Like, how, how do, if it's more than one commissioner who is going to do it? I mean, just as a general process question.
So generally what we would do is we would take a vote and if the vote was, we're going to forward our recommendations to the B O C C. But it was not a unanimous vote and there was two or more people that were on the losing side of that vote. We would ask, who wants to write a minority report opinion? And in prior times, I've written a minority report opinion. And I think, I can't remember who signed on with it, with me, but I basically just went home that Wednesday night, wrote up my thoughts and feelings on everything and then ran it by the other person that was on the losing side of the vote with me, agreed on it and then turned it into staff and then staff forwarded with our recommendation to the O C C. So both, both things were forwarded at the same time.
Okay, I think I understand. So, so because it's not a quorum, like since you have a vote and it's a minority, so it's not a quorum. So it doesn't violate the Open Public Meetings Act.
That's exactly right.
If, if you're doing it with other people, the voting ends. Okay, that's what I was trying to understand. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And so, and that's an opportunity that you can write anything in there about not just what's happened since public or from the public hearing, but all the way back to the very beginning, all the way back to 1994, if you choose. Does that sound right, Andy?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, yeah, I would say if there are issues that, you know, any planning officials want to get into that are not part of what's already been, that we haven't already gone through, then they certainly bring those out.
And even if there's an issue that, like, if you're solo on it and there's an issue, you couldn't turn that in with the planning commission recommendation as a minority report, but you certainly can bring that up with the B O C C and any other meetings or letters or anything like, so. And I'm sure that they, they won't hear all the sides. So the more, or the better, I think. With that, I guess we'll get into chapter one. Does anybody, Doug, it looks like you have a lot of postcards.
I only have four, actually. Okay, that's not bad for me, is it? Well, go ahead and start. The first one is on page 18 in mine. It's 19150450, Letter of Exemptions.
Let me go ahead and share this screen so folks can start to see it. Too many gears here. Do you have the code section?
Section 19150450.
Get there. Yes, so this is.
Letter of exemption. We had to add this definition because it came up in later chapters, so we needed to define it. But I thought it was, letter of exemption is when you have a maintenance project to do. And so you go in and you don't need to get a permit. You just get a letter of exemption because it's a maintenance thing. That's okay. So this definition says to be exempt from S D P. So it would really be exempt from the S D P and then the other.
So technically, there is, a letter of exemption is a, is a term in the Shoreline Management Act that is specifically for shoreline substantial development permits. So hence, the definition here reflects that. And jurisdictions, there are certain instances where we are required to issue those letters. There are certain projects that also meet, that are like federal, getting federal Clean Water Act or can't remember the exact legislation, but basically projects that trigger certain other federal or state requirements, we must also issue those letters of exemption. And then the county has the latitude to issue those letters in other situations when they want to, when they deem it necessary. And I think the way the draft is written is that the letter of exemption specifically would be largely written for things that are at or below the ordinary high watermark. There are also certainly other types of permit act or permit, other types of development or shoreline activities that wouldn't necessarily trigger that level of review. And there's some language in the draft that can point to it that attempts to talk through that and say, you know, you, before you can do development or activities in the shoreline, you technically need Thurston County approval unless otherwise exempted within the program. And then there's language that says, if you're doing minor type things that really don't trigger the definition of development or don't rise to that level, then you do not need prior authorization. So there is like a step through the program that attempts to deal with that so that people replacing just a board on a dock or doing something like that do not need prior authorization from us. They don't need an actual approval of a letter. So the path has been set in the document for people to, the permit reviewer to walk through that. And that's going to be part of the implementation piece. Part of the, part of the pamphlet when we get there is going to be of a nice flow chart saying exactly what kind of things are you doing? And does it rise to the level of development? When does it trigger that permit? When does it not? That's definitely going to be ongoing education that we're going to need to do. But the draft attempts to do that. And this is a piece of it because prior to this, there was no, there was no definition for this and people wondered what it had.
Okay. Anybody have any other on that particular issue?
Okay, the next one is on setbacks, 19150695. We had talked a lot about setbacks when, in doing a development, if it's a new development, it really takes and adds 15 feet to the setback. I mean, to the, to the buffer, is what it does. And I thought we'd have some words to kind of change that.
Chapter 19400, where it actually prescribes that setback. There is language that planning commission added, I think it was prior to the public hearing, that basically says if the applicant can demonstrate that that setback is not required, that the construction methods won't harm the buffer, then it can be waived. So that was, I think.
That's what we did.
Yeah, that's what you did. Yeah, it didn't, and I remember looking at this and thinking, should we put something here? But technically it's, that, you know, definition still holds. It's just a question of would that setback be applied or what would the width of that be is going to be project specific?
That's true.
So.
And that takes care of this one too.
That's awesome. Great. Anyone else have, chapter 100?
I want that couple more, I think.
Well, this is my last one. Your chapter 300. Anyway, on 1940125, water quality and quantity.
I was hoping to kind of go chapter, oh, chapter by chapter. Does anyone else have anything in 19100 or 150?
Somebody raised their hand online. Can you let me?
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yes, we have. Okay, great. So thank you. Thank you for that. How about chapter, uh-oh. Back away from that slowly.
Yes, right.
Okay, chapter 19200. Any questions on any changes proposed in that? Not? Chapter 19300, open policies.
Slow for a second, if we can slow it out for a second. So. I don't know about questions, but in 1920120, the designation criteria, the language is just really clunky. It might want to be cleaned up. It says something along those, it's shorelines appropriate and planned for development. Yeah, it seems like there needs to be commas or hyphens or something in there. It's not clear.
Okay. You said 19, is this right, 1920120?
Yeah, the designation criteria.
Oh, yeah.
Shoreline is appropriate and planned for development that is compatible with maintaining or it's just. Yeah.
Yeah. And I'm pretty sure that comes directly from the WAC. That doesn't mean that we couldn't necessarily try to rephrase it a little bit for clarity.
Think you could do better than ecology there?
But. Yeah, so and throughout this chapter here, you'll notice some of the, there's a lot of strikeout in these designations. And that was because one of the comments ecology made was some of your stuff is not consistent with the WAC. So you should fix that. But yeah, I, I could certainly look at that and try to rephrase that.
All right, that's kind of outside of our scope of what we're doing today anyways. But if you could look at that and clean that up some, I think that would be great.
And so apologies and let me know if this is also out of scope. So on 1920125, the way that the definition is written, it actually, the purpose is written. It juxtaposes the, both the, like, the human and ecological benefits from the role of conservancy. The old one indicated that it was, it was the ecological functions that provided the resources. And this one says, we're providing resources. We're providing amenities while instead of to. So I think it actually.
Yeah, we can. I mean, I could look at it. So I, I know that what's underlined there, the new proposed language is directly from the WAC and what had been there before was similar to, but you know, phrased differently. I could certainly look at whether there's a different way to say that, that brings that emphasis back that is in line with the criteria. So that's something that the planning commission wants me to look at. So you're effectively, to bring back the emphasis for ecological function is the comment?
It's more that they shouldn't be, it's not that they're being balanced. It's that you have rural conservancies so that you have the benefits. It's not that you're trying to necessarily just balance them. The benefits come naturally from rural conservancy definitions. And then on 1920130, section C, number five, says restoration of degraded shoreline should be planned within this environment.
We're kind, we're really kind of getting outside of our scope from.
So what's the scope then?
From public hearing forward, that many decisions that we have.
That is, that is a change that's been made since public hearing.
That's a change that's been made since public hearing.
My assumption was all of the strike through and underlines are new at this point since the last year.
That's correct.
Okay. Hang on, okay. So, but thank you. Appreciate it. This is really actually quite counterintuitive and a really poor restoration strategy is to be focusing on the most, you know, natural designation. You probably actually get much more benefit if you're looking at some of the more developed designations. So, I mean, the, the idea that this is a natural designation means that it should be in really good condition to begin with. So, you know, I could see prioritizing some restoration if there's like a small area that's degraded within one of these designated areas. But it's, really should be a protection or preservation strategy in these natural areas.
So this, the only reason that this is underlined is just because it was moved from the section above to the section below. This, that comes from the ecology guidance and prescriptive language for the natural environment. But I think to your point, the planning commission could consider stating in other environments that we know are going to be more degraded because they're developed, they could make that same statement elsewhere. I think this is looking at, you know, you have environments that aren't developed. Maybe they're not ecologically intact, but they're not developed. And so they're given that natural designation, but those areas that, where that function is missing should be restored. Because otherwise, you know, they're not being impacted by human uses.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything in 19200? I'd like to move on to 19300. There's nothing there. That includes what I had kind of planned for the scope for this evening. And I will leave it up to the planning commissioners to whether you wish to continue conversation or.
Oh, yeah. 300?
Oh, yes, did you have, sorry.
I did.
Oh, hey. I'm sorry. You jumped in the gun.
It's okay. I'm sorry, I just have to find my notes. So I'm looking at 30115. Section G, the stormwater outfalls and drainage from roadways into rivers. This actually reflects really antiquated stormwater management. And, you know, often settling ponds are probably not the right BM. And, you know, often settling ponds are probably not the right BMP. I think if we said something should be, well, first off, eliminated and diverted can't be both at the same time. And I think if you said something along lines of appropriately designed and located stormwater BMPs capable of dot, dot, dot. Reducing harmful chemicals waste, so on and so forth. The, or maybe even make a reference to. Make a reference to stormwater policies. So.
Just for context, so this specific policy was initially proposed by the planning commission prior to the public hearing. And then. I think the, yeah, the other pieces that are underlined have come in since then or trying to remember. I think it was actual discussion with the planning commission prior or after the public hearing. So it wasn't, it's newer in the draft compared to some of the other policy pieces. But I know that several folks here were here and advocated for this language. So curious what planning commission, what other folks think about Chris your days.
For me, I was the one that brought this up. The more specific we can be, the better it is as far as I'm concerned because. And. I'd be willing to look at. We change the and or. What you said sounded good.
Yeah.
Did I did write it down?
Chris, your Wheatley?
Yeah, I like the reference, the idea of a reference to the most recent stormwater manual. Is that kind of what you intended? I mean, that, you know, rather, rather than, yeah, this kind of limits it to one strategy. When what you're trying to do is apply best management practices.
With the assumption that. Yeah, he's in the TD.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So would that be like? Where would, so what is something like consistent with the best practices from the? I'm just looking for some words. Okay.
I have a, I have a problem with doing that. And the reason is it's up, there are obviously both ecologies as well as the counties. There being counties is being updated right now. And they're not looking at anything like this. And in, I've encouraged them to look at climate change in relationship to that because we get heavier rains and whatnot. We don't know what they're going to do. So I'd hate to refer to that.
Well, how about just referring to just best according to best management practices or something like that?
But it's who defines it.
I think those two. I think, so I'm just going to, this is a policy. And that's where I get into, we don't need to be, this isn't supposed to be specific. This is supposed to be a big broad overhead policy. So I, I mean, I don't think we really need to. Because our drainage manual is quoted all over the place. And pretty much everything we do has to do with development. And I don't think that going with. You know, in the back, if we see something where we forgot to men, we forgot to reference the drainage manual, I think that's a good idea. But again, we're talking about policy. It's kind of like the goals of the comp plan. You don't want to get too very specific. You want to leave it open so we can do stuff. Go ahead.
Just for clarification, so I mean, your issue is not just with the, with the new language, but with how it flows into settling ponds, right? Like that's your concern partly is that it it's pretty much this limits it to. To flowing into, sorry, I forgot.
Yeah.
Into settling ponds. And that may not reflect the current practices for how to manage stormwater.
The current practices or the current requirements? And I don't think we want a policy that could conflict with current requirements. I think to your point about the, you know, being not so specific in a policy. If we talked about, you know, appropriately designed, located, like best, like stormwater best management practices, like that would.
That would solve all the issues.
I think it would solve it.
That makes sense to you, Andy?
Yeah, I'll say that again, replace settling clubs with.
So it would say appropriately designed and located stormwater best management practices.
Okay. Or stormwater facilities consistent with best manager practices or something.
Facilities is probably limiting.
Yes.
Because you might want to do something simpler. It might be full dispersion, it might be pavements.
Stormwater BMPs it is.
It might be a rain.
Okay, great. Do you have another one?
There's a, I have a similar one on nineteen three hundred one forty five. So I think similar change would be in C. For. There you go. Again, so designed to manage that stormwater from entering surface groundwater. So I think if it were to reflect the, like the modern kind of standards, it would be designed to. Prevent stormwater from entering surface water or. Groundwater without first. Without being kind of like routed or moved through a BMP. And it's not necessarily filter out. There's also, it's both. Pollutants and there is also the need to try and reduce stormwater flows. So that kind of treatment and flow control.
And it's an out of water quantity on the element. So now the planning commissions is kind of as far as I had.
That's as far as I dreamed. You went through four hundred.
I thought that's what it was, so I did it.
I, there was back, there was, that's what I proposed and then I heard someone say three hundred and I don't know that that.
Well, why don't you give us your four hundred and we'll see if Andy can address it. And if it's not, that's all right.
Under nineteen four hundred one twenty five water quality and quantity.
Okay, just on.
It's on sixty eight.
My book.
Okay, there we are.
And my only question there is we reference a whole bunch of different things, but would this be a place where we would reference our policies?
It could, I mean, without, without doing so, the policy is still carried through the entire document. If there's a specific need to do that, then we certainly could. I mean, there are some pieces of the SMP that are certainly kind of repeated over and over, like you need to mitigate, you need to do et cetera, et cetera. So if it's, if it's a point that bears repeating, I think the planning commission could make that call. But, you know, otherwise it's just assumed that the policy, the, the regulations build on the policies that are earlier in the document.
So it doesn't necessarily exclude it. I mean, people reading this.
Right.
All those I have to worry about. That's the case, I'm fine with it. It's just, you know, that nice perfect policy.
Mr. Day, were you ready to do anything on chapter four hundred?
No.
Anything from any of the commissioners online?
Yeah, Eric.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Harrison.
Yeah. If you go to nineteen four hundred one forty five, Andy?
Yes.
I didn't, I don't have the, the revised version, so just look at paragraph A one. It's, it says regulations five and four, five and six. Should that be paragraphs four, five and six?
It, it could be, this section had a whole lot of re, reorganization done to it in an attempt to separate public access from recreational development.
Right.
One is a programmatic requirement and one is a thing people might want to do in the shorelines. So it, it could be, yeah, I think that's sort of a language issue that. The final scrub of consistency across the board. So you, you, yeah, I don't know for sure what the word should be, but.
Well, I think it's such a, because I looked down at four, five, six, except as provided in paragraphs four, five and six below. Because there aren't any regulations for five and six below.
Well, it does, they do say shall, shall or shall not. I mean, those are regulations. So.
Okay, I mean, it, it just makes more sense if the word was paragraph because that's what you're looking.
It is more inclusive, it's more inclusive. I'm, I'm happy to make that change.
Yeah.
Or section.
Yeah. Section, paragraph clause, it just depends on how far you've ended in. I can look at that.
And then the next one is that I've got is on nineteen five hundred one hundred.
We're not, we're not going to go to five hundred today.
Okay.
Yep.
Then that's, that's all I've gotten so far, Eric.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody else online? Well, here's nothing else. Let's plan for our next meeting. And if anybody does have anything left in four hundred, it's might not have been prepared for, bring four hundred back and do five, six, seven. And you think we do five, six, seven?
Four hundred and six hundred are the biggest chapters. So I think doing, going through seven hundred is ambitious plenty.
Okay, so let's plan for at least through six or try to get through six.
I, I would think through, through seven hundred.
Through seven hundred.
Yeah. And then, you know, the last, if there's carryover, that's also an opportunity to then look at the appendices as well.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Does anybody have any objections to that, that one for you? All right. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to our next piece of continuing business, which is a work session on page twenty seven, nonconforming code update with planner Ashley Wright.
Good evening, thanks for having me back. Ashley Wright with Moon Planning. I'll try to keep this brief so that you have time for discussion. On May eighteenth, the planning commission held a public hearing on these proposed amendments to the existing nonconforming usage structures in last chapter of the critical areas note coordinates. That's title twenty four. Following the public hearing, the planning commission requested further information about the proposed functional isolation provisions, the replacement restoration timeline, as well as the application of best available science. As referred to in the memo and updated staff report, both dated June first, the following changes were made to the draft package of code amendments. For section twenty four point five zero point oh two OD, which was the functional isolation section, we retitled that to non-functioning buffer areas in an attempt to clarify application of the provisions to non-functioning repairing area buffers, as well as the wetland and pond buffers. And then to address comments relating to project size, language was added to limit landward expansions in these non-functioning buffer areas to the width of an existing primary structure. And that is consistent with what is in the draft shoreline management program. Lastly, regarding WDFW comments, a section was added to give approval authority the option of requiring a concurrent review from WDFW. Via two week comment period, just to make sure that development permits could continue in the regular process without being sidetracked. I did make sure to provide the updated language to WDFW and received no further comments from them. In terms of the timeframe for replacing or restoring a nonconforming structure that's been destroyed, I went back to see where that timeline came from. And it was intended to reflect building permit expiration provisions, which do have a lot of nuances. And so based on planning commission feedback, the section has been updated to remove any specific reference to it to your timeframe, which essentially means that the building permit provisions will apply as it pertains to any type of. Timeline or timeframe provisions for those replacement or reconstruction. And then lastly, the staff report was updated to more, to more clearly identify how best available science was applied to the proposed package of code amendments. So tonight, I'm happy to answer any specific questions about the updates that were made and look forward to hearing a planning commission recommendation.
Thank you. Or anybody here that would like to start off with anything? Anybody online have any comments on page twenty seven? Ashley, are you ready for this to go forward to?
I'm, I'm not saying I don't have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just wanting to defer to other folks.
Do you have something you'd like?
Yeah, well, as always, I can relax.
Okay, well, let's, it's your show right now.
Okay. Well, one, you know, just on those. Three responses, the fish and wildlife, one, two. It seemed to me there was a bit of a gap between the response and what was being asked for. And where, point is to where in the changes, which page that's on?
It'd be page four of the draft code amendments. And so it would be subsection three of D. And I did highlight it to make it easier to see where I made changes.
Okay, yeah. Approval authority may, may require concurrent review by WDFW and or technical review by qualified professional. And then if a concurrent review requires fish and wildlife will have two weeks. What they seem to be asking for was language requiring. Concurrents from the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Department of Ecology and the tribes. When it has been determined that a functionally isolated buffer or functional isolation exists.
Yeah, so we did look, look at doing that. So the Department of Ecology, they have clear guidance on functional isolation. And we already have those provisions in the wetland section. So in terms of them having an additional review or concurrent review for wetland buffers, didn't, like, they didn't provide those comments to us directly requesting it. And so when I wrote back to Noel at WDFW, I did say that, you know, if DOE requests, you know, a concurrent review in this case, even though we don't provide it in the existing case of functional isolation, we could easily entertain that. And then with the tribes, it would, we have to do CIPA on this still, where they would all get, all the tribes that would be affected do get notification and could ask for that review. But WDFW asking for review on behalf of another agency is. It just seemed a little bit awkward at this stage versus having that feedback directly from the tribes.
Well, maybe, I mean, my interpretation of this is that the concern, and it goes to. A concern that's mentioned by a number of the folks at that hearing or in public comments. Is that. Critical, the, the changes apply to all critical areas. And there's different kinds of critical areas. They're not just wetland necessarily related. There's, there's all kinds of issues that critical areas address. And it seems like. What this was going to, and of course, I'm, I'm not him, so I, I don't know. But. There's a concern that. Each individual request is going to be on a different kind of land with different kinds of critical area issues associated with it. So it's hard to make a blanket determination. So it seems like what this is about, and you know, other folks who pipe in if, if it doesn't make sense what I'm saying. It seems like what it's about is that. They are wanting more review than just by county staff on this question that is a really a science question. And so I think that's why Fish and Wildlife is saying require some kind of input from. You know, from other agencies around science. This is, this is one of these best available science kinds of issues. So that's my interpretation of it is that it's important that it be required. And from what I can tell from this. And from what I can tell from this, it's, it's just an opportunity that's provided. So that seems like a difference. And I don't know if others are concerned about that, but to me, because I have a lot of concerns about best available science here, that seems like at the same time, I just want to observe, though, that when you come down to that, if it starts having to require pulling in other agencies, pulling in the tribes, et cetera, it's worth thinking about, you know, since kind of the impetus for this whole thing is to save costs to people making their permit applications. I think this was raised by at least one person in comments. It might just be a shifting of costs from, you know, one place to another. If, if it requires, you know, pulling in college or your fish and wildlife. So that's just an observation. But I don't know. I don't know if other people have, have thoughts about, you know, whether it's important to, to say that when it comes to making a determination about whether there's a biological or hydrological function, you know, who makes that determination? Is it suspicion?
And I think, I also have a kind of a question, like, what's the, what's the relationship between the determination and the review? If Department Fish and Wildlife has a review option at the approval authority's discretion, what's the, like, the difference going to be placed or if you like that? What's the?
So if there is a biologic or, biological or hydrological function identified, then this exemption doesn't apply. Essentially, that permit becomes subject to the critical area review permit, but reasonable use exception or whatever, whatever other permit would apply based on the project being proposed. Because this, this whole section really only does apply if no biological or hydrological function exists, and that can either be determined by county staff and, you know, in one case, you might have, like, it's, it's already pavement. It's been used as a concrete pad. And it's very clear that there, there are, there's no plants in existence. There's, there's nothing there. And so in that case, you know, it might be a clear cut. In other situations, you know, staff, even under current review, will require that third-party technical review to, you know, ensure that whatever determinations are made are in line with the critical areas or ones. And this would kind of fall in that same category. So treated very, treated just like we treat the third-party technical, technical reviews that are already part of all the permit reviews that are in the critical areas or ones.
And I'd say it's probably not clear from that section, and I would think we'd probably want, if, you know, somebody's reading this, we'd want them to know what the, like, the outcome of that could be.
Is that within this two, I mean, I guess my other question about this, I'm not reading it very well, but so does that mean, like, determination is made and then somehow, somehow there's, appropriate bodies are informed that this finding was made, and then they get two weeks to send somebody out and look at it or do whatever they need to do to make the determination? What's the, what's the process that's kind of implicit?
Like, the, the permit flow?
Yeah. Yeah.
I could get verification from the building department exactly what the permit flow looks like for current permits, but I, I do know that, like, the third-party technical review that we can and do ask for as part of review of permits is already something that happens on a regular basis. And so it would just fall within that, within that process. So not cha, not really changing the process of the, the building department or goes through. It's just put adding in WDFW as a party that could be notified in the case of riparian buffers, where there's any question that there's hydrological or biological function.
But does this mean that, that they're notified or they can be notified? They're not necessarily notified? And then they have two weeks to respond?
They would have a two-week comment period.
Okay, so if they don't, okay.
What, what, I guess what I'm hearing is, so if there's a determination that there's nonsensitifcience in this, in this particular project, is that, is that where it stops? It doesn't go to wildlife or ecology?
If, if, in like the situation where there's like an existing concrete pad, and I'm just, you know, trying to come up with an example, like, in that case, I, I am presuming that the building department would say one, that there is, there's no hydrological or biological function. Having said that, it is still, or can you speak more directly to this?
I'm going to sit down here so I get picked up by the mic. I appreciate that. Yeah, if you know permit flows and process more than I do, please. So typically what happens is that an application will come in and we do our review. If, and the applicant needs to provide us documentation and show us that they don't meet or that they do meet this definition. If there's a question about that or if there is a disagreement about that, then at the moment, we send that over to a third-party reviewer who will give us their unbiased opinion and then we move forward. In this case, we would, if there is a question, we would go to our partners at WDFW and say, hey, this is what we're seeing. This is what they've provided us. We don't, we're not jiving what you all see as the wildlife and technical experts. They have two weeks to provide their comments back to us so that we can then review and digest that. If at that point, we still are not in agreement with the applicant, we would ship that out to a third-party reviewer at the request of the applicant or do some other kinds of modifications in order to make it fit within the rules as they're currently written. Or as Ashley has currently written them, it would be picked up and taken out of that process and put through the arguing process. Does that make sense?
Okay, but it's, so, so where is it put in here that the county would go to Fish and Wildlife or is that just something?
So that's part of the language that says WDFW may?
And then how does the public know?
The applicant?
That this permit request has been made. I mean, because when you have it going to the hearing examiner, there's public notice.
So you're asking, how does the applicant know that?
Now, how would the, how would the public know that we don't do notifications for administrative reviews?
Right.
So this would be a difference between the current policy, where we go to a hearing examiner versus the proposed policy that it go under administrative review, right?
Correct. We don't do the public noticing under administrative reviews. There's specific public noticing for the RUBs, and I'd have to look up what that is.
So what happens if wildlife doesn't respond in two weeks?
Then we move on. That's why we.
So you just allow it?
Yeah. And that's why we did add the two-week timeframe so that everybody knew that WDFW had that and WDFW knew, knows that they had that timeframe so that they would get us back comments because at the moment, they're very good about communicating with us, but we all know that it's close.
And then my other question, given that there was this response from Fish and Wildlife, is have, has, have the tribes and asked to look over this proposed change?
So during our CIPA notification, they will have the opportunity to review a comment?
Okay, but not under the process of doing this under best available science?
I don't understand that statement. All right, well.
I mean, they have the same ability to comment and everybody else. There's public notice put out. They either come and comment or they don't.
Well.
I'm not sure that that's entirely the right frame to think of it in. You know, putting the tribes who do have very specific rights that we actually, as a county, have the ability to infringe on, that should, if for no other reason than trying to protect our own work, be all the more reason to include them more thoroughly. And I, so I think I understand where it helps, like, the Department Fish and Wildlife is being brought in because they're essentially holders of some best available science in this area. And I think, honestly, I think that giving that review ability to the department and not the tribes is a little bit problematic in that they might hold some of the same or even better information than the Department of Fish and Wildlife to be able to identify whether or not something is actually, you know, non-functional in a buffer area. I know that is, at the end of the day, that's, that's a layer that may or may not be palatable to add to a review, but I think including the tribes in the same way that we've included the Department of Fish and Wildlife is at least respectful.
To just for clarification, including them in the review of the earlier draft or including them in the review in terms of like the review for the non-functioning buffer areas?
I'd probably suggest both, but in this case, I think I'm talking specifically about in the process here that we're laying out.
So that is the will of the planning commission? We can have that as the option moving forward to the board of county commissioners. But I will say that the tribes will have their opportunity to make comments.
Day, are you, are you suggesting that they should be specifically invited to comment?
Feelings on both sides of the issue, but I think I lean towards they probably should be. We should at least entertain it.
This is Kevin Abercrombie.
In all cases?
I, so we have a, here we have, this is at the discretion of the county, whether or not we include either Fish and Wildlife or any other reviewer, because the approval authority may require. So it's fully discretionary at the county level. So that's the if, if the county so determines it's necessary.
What would be the negative implications to the building permit center on inviting the tribes to comment?
So as we have it written, the negative to inviting additional public comments or comments in general are timelines for permits, because we do have set timeframes that we have to abide by under state law. So the way we currently have it written, if what's being requested by the planning commission is to just add applicable tribes that under or behind WDFW or however it's currently written, they would then have the same two-week time period to make comments so that it didn't hold up that particular permit application moving forward.
Would, would anything that they say, like, right now, the way it is, if Fish and Wildlife comes back during this dispute and tells you how they feel about it with their best available science, it would probably sway building permit center opinion greatly.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially. How much sway would one of the tribes have in a situation like that, the same as the other agencies?
It would depend on the information that came in.
Does anybody else on the planning commission have feelings on whether or not the tribe should be invited in the same way that the other state agencies are?
I do.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Day. I've talked to the Niskali tribe on multiple occasions and including with people working with David Trout, who's a very appropriately named fisheries resource manager. And they have amazing research. They have more research than we can possibly imagine on fisheries and recovery and wildlife habitat. And they've often said the phrase that they don't go around offering this information on their own. But nobody here in the county, either at the city level or other agencies such as the port or the county, have come to them and asked them for their data and research and best practices. And if they would, the tribe would be very willing to share that data. And they view themselves as a sovereign government, and they don't view it as their responsibility to monitor every little decision that each of these local agencies is making and make public comments on them. But they have amazing research, and I think we ought to encourage the county to reach out for it.
Commissioner Hanson or Commissioner Halverson, do you have anything on this subject?
I, I'd be inclined to agree with Commissioner Day as well, that it, it's appropriate to invite the tribes. Yeah.
I am, well, we've, we've had David Trout, he's a friend of the planning commission. He has come and testified before us on other issues, and there's no doubt that he's an expert on many of these issues. So having his input on stuff is something that I am certainly not against by any stretch of the imagination. I just do not understand the implications that that would have on the building permit center and how they would handle it. I think before we made a decision on that particular issue, I'd like the building permit center to kind of dive in and see how that would change things, if it would at all be any different than DFW or DOE or something like that.
My suggestion would also be to be very clear about the scope of the review to define it pretty clearly.
Yeah.
And what kind of considerations the review should. Yeah, that it should be based, no, it's, it is a, you're seeking a scientific opinion essentially. So I don't know if I would actually, essentially, you know, you're trying to reach out to the tribal biologists who could tell you whether or not the submitted determination or submitted information is accurate, it reflects reality. That's the scope of the review. And I think even with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, I think it should be pretty clear what the review specifically is. And then it's very specifically to kind of assess the information that's been provided.
Is that something?
Provide additional information.
Is that something you'd expect that the county review, planner review would then reach out for in setting those, those guidelines?
I would put them here just so the expectations are clear and it doesn't put the burden back on staff to negotiate that with the tribal government.
Here as in the code?
Yeah, in the code.
All right. Well, if we're done with that, and since we have plenty of time, can we take a step back? One question that I perhaps didn't ask clearly enough, but I did ask, and it wasn't included among those three questions in this, in the summary here. So it wasn't answered because it wasn't included as a question. It's probably because it was a really poorly put question, but you know, we had the hearing and we also did some, you know, through this process, we did some finding of fact. And one of the things we figured out was where did this come from? Because we didn't, when we started this process, we weren't very clear on what the impetus for this whole code revision was. And what we determined was that it was not driven by the county commissioners. They put it on the docket, but the code revision process itself was not a request of county commissioners.
I did not get that impression.
Well, go back and listen to the audio and the discussion.
Well, I, I mean, I can say I kind of got that impression, but I don't think it matters because staff said this is an issue. County pressure said put it on the docket.
Yes.
So it was an impetus of the county commissioners.
Okay, well, allow me to carry through on this because I think we did make a finding, and it is in the records that it was not, it was initiated by staff in response to things that they were hearing, you know, in their experience of this process. Okay? So I, I think we have determined that. But in any event, that goes to the question of what But in any event, that goes to the question of what problems are being solved with this? And I've been trying to understand that and I listened carefully to the public hearing. And I, what I heard from the public was most of the concern, and we had discussion about this last meeting. You know, most of the concern was really about a couple of issues. One of them was people want to, especially, you know, there was an example brought up of an elderly person who, you know, wanted to be able to stay where they were in place. And it's hard for them to do because it was hard for them to get a bedroom added on that a caregiver couldn't. Okay, so that was an issue. So it's kind of a livability for the person in the, in the place was an issue. And then the other very major issue seemed to be this question of how much improvement could be made because of the costs of doing improvements and sort of exceeds that 50% value threshold that is in the language on, on.
Alteration, the definition of alteration.
Alteration, yeah, yeah. So that was a really big issue. And it sounded to me like the problem people were having that they wanted solved was that they felt like they couldn't do anything without violating that threshold, you know, without going past that threshold. So my que, this is all preference to the question that I had asked as we were having that discussion. And that was, what if, what would be wrong with thinking about addressing that issue without changing everything else about the code? Like especially this issue of taking it away from being a hearing examiner's question about non-conforming structures to becoming an administrative review question. And the reason, you know, another element of that was there were, seemed to be several comments about concern about putting this, you know, shifting sort of the cost of this whole question to staff who, you know, there were many comments about the capacity of staff to, to be able to handle this new thing. So I was asking a sort of an origins question, which perhaps because I'm a historian, I do that. But that was, are we, you know, is this solving the fundamental problem that was raised in the first place or is it a whole bunch of stuff on top of solving that problem? What if, what if, for example, we were to make a recommendation that this language not be adopted, however, that the commissioners request a closer look at this value, you know, the 50% threshold problem? And perhaps, you know, a couple of other ones that were the issues were actually brought up. Would that really require all of this to solve those particular problems that seem to be the genesis of this whole process? It seems, in other words, you know, it seems like you could find some simpler solutions than changing the code. And that gets back to, I mean, at least changing the code as extensively as we're doing it here. It seems like there's just a couple of sticking points. And one of the members, I think it was Ms. White, is that her name? I think she made a comment, you know, why not have a stakeholder group go back and look at that question? Because on the one hand, it's a bit overboard to say that you can just willy-nilly entirely replace structures or do major remodelings, et cetera, such that it attracts more human use? Because that was a comment that a lot of people made, that they're very concerned that this will lead to a significant increase in requests and that that will lead to a significant increase in human use where it's not being used right now in these critical areas. So so if you, no, I've lost my train now, but it just seems like it's worth asking the question, do we have to do all of this to address those couple of problems that people are having? Could we suggest going back and not going this far on it and then not getting all tied up in questions like, you know, when to reach out to the tribes or?
Yeah, I guess I'm, you're confusing me because the issue that I heard when it was presented in the beginning is that people are trying to add to their home, close a little patio so they could have a bedroom or whatnot. They can't afford to do it because they have to pay for a consultant. They have to go before the hearing board, cost them $12,000, $15,000 just to get anywhere before they even get the permit. So they can't afford to do the project because a $5,000, $10,000, $15,000 project now costs three times that because of the hearing board. And it's just, these are projects are all just small little things. And so the 50% thing, I mean, of course, I don't think dollars, I don't think any difference anyway as far as 50% of the value of the house, nobody can put their finger on that. Especially the way it's defined here. But it's really about the cost of getting the permit because they can't afford to do it just to add a little bedroom. And that's all we're really talking about, a small little project. We're not talking about someone going in and building a brand-new house. Yes, they can replace a house in the same footprint.
Yeah.
And they can go up in the same footprint. They should be allowed to do that.
Well, not. I disagree with that.
Okay, well, you can disagree, but, you know, somebody paid for that property, they paid for a house, they built it and they ought to be able to, they ought to be able to replace it, so.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have something?
Well, I guess I'm kind of with Doug on that one. If I'm putting, you know, and I've done that at my, I put on this exact same footprint. Different, like I went up, but it allowed me to really replace a home that was 100 years old.
Right, but we have, we have, we're talking about critical areas and they have their own very particular rules and guidelines.
On the short line.
Yeah.
And steep slope.
I mean, they have their very own, but we allow existing uses to continue. And so, and I don't, I mean, I think we do, we have two issues here. One is the destruction one. And I would think that at least the majority of us are in agreement. If your house burns down, you should be able to put it back up in the same footprint without having to go to a public hearing.
Well, I think that's allowed under the current code, isn't it?
Yeah. I'm saying, I'm saying this is where we're going, right? The question is, what do you have the ability to add on to? And where's the determination whether or not that impacts critical area?
And that's where I feel that this, the code, the code changes are overbroad and it could be narrowed down quite a bit to address those particular questions.
Okay, Commissioner Day?
Thank you. So I think that you very easily could narrow it down. I don't know, I'm, I think I'm in the camp of like, see something, say something, see something, fix something. And if there's an opportunity to open it and make it better, I don't think that that's necessarily a problem. I also think about this idea of kind of increased use. I mean, if I have to imagine what's actually happening, like most of these residents are occupied, people already live there. You know, maybe somebody's little tiny decrepit like front cabin gets updated. But at the same time, one of the things we've already done is we've accounted for these dwellings to accommodate people in our county. And we should be able to, like, the housing stock should be able to adjust to people's housing preferences. And I think that's part of what this does because if you don't, you know, that little lakefront cabin will continue to be a lakefront cabin. It might just be something that somebody uses on the weekends and then somebody's going to build a house somewhere else. So I don't necessarily see it as so stark of a trade-off. The idea of, you know, fixing up our available housing stock. I'm a serial remodeler of Craftsman bones. So, you know, and, you know, honestly, a lot of them, you know, don't see maintenance for years and it's, you know, by the time you get there, it's a, it's pretty significant what needs to be done. So, and not being able to maintain the housing stock or adapt it to today's living standards. We heard in the public testimony last time about, you know, a couple who wanted to put solar panels on their roof and essentially like they're, they felt like this system was holding them back. I think that this, I think the, the one question I think I do still have is kind of really what's the, you know, what's the, the big impact, maybe this has been covered, but I wasn't here, between switching from like a hearings examiner to administrative review, it being a staff question.
Cost.
Cost.
It's significant cost in both time and in money to bring something forward hearing.
And if, if that's the case, you know, I don't think we should be, if, if we want to reduce or change the way that people use land in critical areas, we should address that directly instead of using administrative burdens to keep people from doing things. We should be upfront, deliberate if we are trying to limit uses somewhere. So I, I think this is prudent.
Does anybody else have anything on this? I think we have a couple of opinion questions that Yuri wrote down.
I just want to make sure that, I'm going to reflect them back to you, make sure I've got them as we're sort of narrowing down.
Before you do that, I think Commissioner Pestinger had something. Kevin? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cattina. I was just going to mention that I'm in support of Commissioner Wheatley's concerns.
Okay, thank you.
So I have more clearly identifying the scope of review. If, if county staff desires that concurrent review and/or third-party review. And then question to the Building Development Center regarding any impact that notifying the tribes would have on the timeline for the review of those permits and, and/or any other concurrent review. We do have this language elsewhere in the code. So there is a precedent for concurrent reviews and so we'll just make sure that we understand.
Anything else that you'd like to have Ashley bring back?
Well, I think, you know, given the, the testimony, you know, I think this question of cumulative impacts and you know, what the sense, you know, we, I mean, this was a question that was asked earlier. We know how many applications have been made historically, but what is an estimate of the potential increase in applications?
So we've tried to do that and we cannot give you a potential estimate. The problem with that is that because the R U V process as it stands to date has been in place since 2012, people know that and understand that and it's cost prohibitive, so they have stopped coming in or even stopped asking. So we have no basis to provide you any sort of estimate.
Is there a way that you would be able to keep track of, say that this does pass and goes forward? That you would track how many applications you had come through that wanted to use this process? And then we can go back in a few years and look to see and do our own monitoring to see if this is something that needs to be reviewed or, and maybe the G O C C would want to redocket it or anything like that.
So as we build our new permitting system, part of that could be part of the reporting, what type of permits are being issued in, and in what manner, R U E versus administrative?
Is that a field that's already in there, do you think, or can it be added easily?
It's not in there now because we don't have it, so.
Or is planned to be there, I should say.
If this particular piece goes through, it would be part of our reporting system.
All right.
I will say in terms of cumulative impacts, since it did come up earlier, I have been thinking about that as we've had our briefings. Because we're limiting this to alterations within existing building footprints, non-functioning buffer areas where it's been demonstrated and verified, and then very small changes outside of that in terms of the rest of the code. The cumulative impact should be very, like, very small, if none. And for those projects that would be reviewed administratively, the staff still have to find through the critical review department, no one at loss. It can still require mitigation just as the hearing examiner does through the reasonable use exception.
Commissioner Wheatley, I believe that your biggest concerns are that system can be abused, cumulative impacts can be generated without really realizing it and that next thing you know, they're overwhelmed with it.
Right, so you, yeah, kind of an adaptive management approach, yes.
Is monitoring these permits that are issued in the new system, is that something that makes you feel a little better about the deal?
Yeah, I think that information would be useful because it would go to this question of increased use, which you don't want to encourage, you don't want to encourage increased use in the critical area. And I think that's pretty clear in all the, you know, the commerce guidelines and so forth, that, you know, what you don't want to be doing is.
All right, does anybody have anything else that they would like Ashley to bring back before we make the final decision on this particular issue? Doesn't sound like it, so thank you very much. We are way ahead of schedule here, but with that, let's move on to other business. Number, agenda item seven with staff updates.
I have more dates for you this evening, so.
Did your senior planner get appointed?
Yes, our senior planner has been appointed and he is sitting behind us.
Congratulations. And you're still two F T E short then.
Yeah, so.
Plus a program manager.
Correct.
Two planners short.
Two associate planners here, isn't it? Yep, and they're all out of the record.
I have a staffing question.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Some of you may have seen recent articles in the newspaper about some planned development of a gas station and two warehouses in the Grand Bound area. And in the newspaper article, it mentioned there was a public hearing going through to June 14th and that for more information, contact Rich Felsen, associate planner at Thurston County. I was not familiar with that project, I was not familiar with that name. I looked him up, he's not on the, he is listed as an associate planner. He's not listed on the Thurston County Community Planning Staff List. He's not listed on the Development Staff List. I'm just wondering, where, where does he fit in your team? And this type of a project and public hearing, is this totally separate from planning commission or falls under the purview of some other group?
Yeah, so we've had a lot of new staff come in, so I'm going to have a background. So we have community planning, which is my group and people that you see roll through here. And we're the long-range planners and water monitoring group. And then we've got current land use and environmental review, they're our current planners. And those staff fall under Brett's who you have met during the 27th discussion initially. And Rich is part of our current planners who review and permit projects that come through the door. So to answer your question, he does work for Development Services under Brett's group. And if you're not seeing him on the list of staff, it's probably because we haven't updated our website, which is a large.
which is a large county project that's ongoing at the moment to make sure that we actually move into a new platform.
Your, your, your community planning staffing list was updated two weeks ago, but the development list was updated two years ago. So that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Anything else online or staff updates? All right, let's move on to calendars. Our next meeting will be June fifteenth, twenty twenty two with a tentative schedule of an S M P update. We'll get back to that wireless code update, assuming everybody's feeling good. And then we will also be working on boundary line adjustment code amendment. Is everybody, is anybody planning on not being able to make the June fifteenth meeting? All right, looks like we should have a full house. Meeting after that will be July sixth, twenty twenty two, where we'll be working again on the boundary line adjustment code amendment. And then the emergency housing ordinance and the ag C A O amendments, tentatively. Is there anybody thinking that they might not be able to make the July sixth meeting? Looks like we should have a full house there too, which would be great. That's what I was about to ask, do you have the date picked yet for the B O C C dinner?
July fourteen, yes.
July fourteen. Is there anybody that's not planning on coming to the July fourteenth? Because it is technically a meeting open to the public and everybody's there. Is there anybody that does not expect to make it to the July fourteenth dinner with the B O C C at Mercado?
I may be out of town.
Okay.
That week.
Well, if you are, we'll save you a box. All right, well.
Chair Casino?
Yes.
After we finish this section, is there a possible area for a good of the order?
Yes, that will be part of this. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Question about, you know, just anticipation of the wireless meeting and it's prompted by public comment. From what I can tell, this process started in March of last year, is that right? Was that one, you know, roughly, that was like seven, eight years plus ago? Yeah, so in that process, there was a subcommittee forum.
A gym and.
Yeah, and then there was that.
Small group.
That, that letter that was written that came out of the subcommittee, but it wasn't really formally from the subcommittee, right?
It was one of the members.
It was from one of the members.
Yeah, but it kind of generalized. It was a stakeholder group, not a subcommittee. There were two planning commissioners on it, it was a stakeholder group.
Okay, so.
I believe there was four citizen representatives, two wireless representatives and two planning commissioners.
So out of that, then, you know, I was trying to listen to the subtext of, of the comment this evening. Was there a discussion of that letter or of the, like, at one, at one of the meetings? Was there like fairly formal, you know, at, at the meeting discussion?
We discussed that letter. We think there's parts of it, we've discussed parts, I believe, I remember Commissioner, I think Commissioner Robertson brought up a couple of points in our meeting. But we didn't go line by line through the letter, just a couple of topics. Go ahead.
So the wireless amendment was brought before the planning commission. Planning commission had held a public hearing on the topic. After that public hearing, the four county commissioners asked for a stakeholder group to be formed and three meetings were held. From those meetings, once we got through those meetings, we came back to planning commission. And at that next planning commission meeting or that planning commission meeting after the three stakeholder meetings, we provided the opportunity for the telecommunications group to provide their comments and feelings from that stakeholder meeting or meetings. And the citizens on that group to provide their comments from that meeting. And they also provided written comments and testimony to our comments to the planning commission. So there was full information provided to the planning commission from all members of that particular subcommittee or, excuse me, stakeholder group for the planning commission to hear and understand.
And do, do commissioners feel that that material that was brought forward was adequately discussed at the time? Or should it be circled back around to or?
I'm sure that we'll have, when Caitlin comes to present some more, that, you know, we'll have some more questions come through, but, or more answers.
I do not.
Commissioner Pestinger does not, okay, well, when, when staff brings that back before us, we'll certainly go through your concerns.
Were you going to elaborate a little bit, Commissioner?
I can, I mean, I, I find this document that's titled results of the, let's see, results of wireless stakeholder committee. I don't think this memorandum remotely reflects the volume of discussion that was put forward and that was debated and that was especially, it covers next to nothing that was covered by the community representatives.
Okay, well, why don't we, we'll make sure that Commissioner Pestinger is able to give his perspective on that issue when staff brings this issue back to us in two weeks. And we'll make sure that there's, well, if everything goes as well with S M Ps as it did today, we should have plenty of time to go through wireless next time a little bit more extensively. But I want to make sure that everybody gets heard before we make any decisions on wireless for sure.
Sir, going back to calendars.
Yeah.
I'm missing a week, so we're not meeting the twenty nine.
About the third Wednesday, only the first and the second Wednesday. First and third, first and third, I'm sorry, first and third.
I can have a special section.
I just keep thinking every other week.
Commissioner Pestinger, did you have anything else for the good of the order or was that your topic?
I did have something else, thank you.
Go ahead.
So, you know, I, I wanted to make a sort of impassioned plea and also comment and thank people. I've heard a lot of voices on the, on this commission who've spoken up in the last few meetings about climate change and about the importance and impact of climate change, how much it's going to affect us and, and future generations. I, I've heard people talk a lot about the storm waters by far, in a way, the biggest issue here for us locally. And I've heard that echoed elsewhere and I agree. In the last few days, I've seen in the news, the, the young students from Olympia High School and others who did a die-in at the Olympia City Council about the climate. I heard about Portland's school students going on strike and going to the Portland City Hall and stating that they had two main demands. And, and the one is, I can't remember, it was something you hear all the time. But the second one completely shocked me, being somewhat of a transportation planner, having some background with that. And they said they wanted to ask for no more freeway expansion. And at first I was totally blown away with that request. But the more I thought about it, I thought they might be on to something that might be pretty smart and pretty dramatic and pretty drastic, and it might be in the direction of the types of things that need to happen in order for us to potentially improve the environment. And I just, I'm wondering, I'm hearing these meetings, I've now been here since, you know, July of last year, and I hear all these discussions and I hear that we all care about the environment and, and doing things to improve the environment. But I, I keep wondering, when are we going to make decisions that are really dramatic and drastic changes to the way we operate in the, in terms of conservation, in terms of mitig, mitigation, in terms of remediation, restoring and, and returning and rebuilding a nat- natural habitat and natural ecological function? And I just am begging us, I, I, I can't fathom that we keep making these decisions and we're, at the end of the day, I don't think any of us would walk away from these and say, wow, we're really doing things differently now around here. And I don't know how we're going to possibly turn around the situation with the environment unless we start walking away from these decisions by saying, wow, we really are doing something different here now. And so that's my plea.
Thank you, Commissioner Pestinger. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, we have had some discussion about, well, minutes. And that kind of led to some good discussion at the last meeting about sort of maybe it's time to go back and, and relook at some things about how the plan.
Rules and procedure.
Yeah, the rules and procedure. And, you know, we have this meeting with the commission coming up, I don't know if that's related or not, but is there some way that we can talk about making room for that conversation to start and to happen as we move forward? Because in response to Commissioner Pestinger's impassioned plea, I think that giving ourselves the freedom to have discussion among ourselves about these kinds of matters might be a way to, to start to move in that direction. And I, you know, I, I'm not sure that the planning commission is realizing its full potential under the rules of procedure right now. And so I, I really think we need to have some of those discussions about the planning commission and what it's doing, how it does it and where it might need to be updated and, and that kind of thing. And, and open it to the public as well to, to talk about.
Tell me if I'm, I'm translating this wrong, but I, I want to think that you're thinking that through the rules of procedure, we might be able to open up our scope by more than just what is on the docket and the workflow that staff puts before us.
Well, I think that scope's already there in the rules of procedure, so that's one of the conversations that I think it's worth having. So, yeah, I just, I just like us to, to find some way to have these conversations.
I think that it's certainly within our scope to talk about how we run ourselves, for sure. I'm still very hesitant to tell staff what to do or how to handle us or how to devote time to us or to deviate from the docket. That's, I, I just don't think that's within our purview at all. But we can certainly have conversations about what we do here internally. And maybe there are some, there are some fringes there that we can start dabbling into that might be useful. Steve, if you're looking at me like you're ready to tell me I'm absolutely wrong.
No, I just want the commission to be aware of their boundaries, that the planning commission is here to, works at the head of the board and they do set the work plan for the board. And we do have a very aggressive work plan moving forward, as you can see, coming up. And we've got like three development codes that we're trying to move through and, and that all takes time on staff's part.
It's a lot of stuff.
That's a lot of stuff and. Right, and we only have, we really only have four days to prepare the information that you just asked us for to get it to you so that you have the sufficient time to review before we come back to you in two weeks. So just be aware of those particular boundaries as you talk about the procedures and how you all govern yourselves in any, excuse me, subcommittee that's created to discuss the rules and procedures.
Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Oh, with no further business, this meeting is adjourned.